I would like to call this meeting to order and the first item on business is going to be a commission report. And we have, as you may know, a thing called the Wellness Group, and I am part of the Wellness Group, and it's a way to get yourself a little well. And so Vicki Look is one of our representatives, management assistant Vicki Look. She's going to give us a little report about the Wellness Committee certificate.
Okay, commissioners. Good afternoon. We have received our 2015 Wellness Award, and what that means is that we have earned the credits toward getting the Wellness Benefit for the 2% deduction for the 2016 medical benefits. We get a 2% discount because we are considered a well city. That isn't something that they just give to everybody. You have to earn it, and our staff here does a really good job participating, and our committee comes up with all these ideas for different things. We're doing a golf thing now because of the US Open over there, and so we walk our trails, our city trails. We have three of them in town, and so we've been doing that, and then those folks that golf and stuff, they also keep their scores. And so that's kind of a challenge that we have going on right now. They sent us certificates, and I see we have a few of our committee members in the audience today, and so I want to present them with their certificates because they do a lot of work. We meet monthly, but we talk about what we're going to do, activities, luncheon, wellness, all those things that we have to do in order to qualify for the Wellness Benefit. So Thomas Donnelly is the finance representative. Thank you, Thomas. And we have Leslie Ann over here, so she's very active, and she comes up with a lot of really good ideas. Christina is doing a really good job for us on the committee, and as is Tracy Wilson. So I really appreciate all they do. We come up with ideas, and they launch them, and you get them done, and we get to send that into WC. When we do those sorts of things, we also get things like scholarships, and we just, because of all the things that we've been doing, and Brett Clark is also on our committee. He's not here today. He's a fairly new member. But we tend to get things done when we have people at our meetings with us that make decisions. So hopefully, we're having a little exercise room set up in the back room, and so we were able to get a scholarship for $430 and some dollars, and part of that was to purchase a TV that has a DVD player in it so that we can do exercise DVDs and those sorts of things. So we're pretty excited about that, and hopefully, we'll get that done maybe in the next year. We'll get the room set up, and we can do that. Sarah Childers from the Police Department is also on our committee, and she's not here today, but I wanted to thank them. So with that, we have, we also have a little magazine, and we wanted to show you that one of our staff was in the magazine. They took the picture. Yeah, so I'll give you all one. They focus on the well cities, and they do these little brochures, and as you can see, they put one of our.
Can we applaud these people that got their awards?
Oh, yes.
Can we applaud for those people?
Yes. Yes, you're the mayor. You get to run the show.
Oh, I don't know. I just knew we needed to have applause in there. Thank you very much, sweetheart. And you too, Vicki Look. You're part of this too, I think, aren't you?
Yes, I have a certificate as well, so here's mine. Anyway, we're looking for ideas, and we always want to start new activities and stuff, so we try to get as many people involved. This year, we started doing kind of a quarterly. The commissioners took a quarter, and Tracy had the first quarter, and we did some things. We did a tailgate party and all sorts of stuff. Well, that was Dave's. Dave did the tailgate party, and then with Tracy, we were doing the walk the trails. And then Michaelson will do, yes, walk the trails. And then Michaelson will take the summer months, and the mayor will take the winter months, and we will plan activities. We recognize they need help. We also have some signs awarded to us that are really nice well-city signs, and we were kind of trying to figure out where to place them. And I just wanted you to know that the decision is to put them at the trailheads. That would be the Huff &amp; Puff, Shelton Creek, and Ravenna Trail. And so that'll show that when people come to walk our trails, that they'll see that we're a well city, and they're pretty awesome trails, actually. I've been walking them. So I encourage everybody to go out and take a look, because especially Shelton Creek was just recently completed, and it's just beautiful.
Thank you very much.
We'd like a picture. And I'd like to say thank you to Vicki for having a management support on the teams, and she does very well being side by side with me with the ideas. You know, I got the ideas, and then she reminds me.
She had a lot of motivation.
Yes. So come on.
Sorry, Sticks is going to always want a motivation.
We tend to liken a little more to the chocolate, but that's okay.
Hold your certificates. I think I did it.
When you're doing the trails, remember the steep one up behind the library.
Yes, yes.
Extra points for that one.
And I just listed that as the verse. I didn't know what that was.
It's probably, my kids always tell me, "Don't make me go."
All right. Next on our agenda is our commission weekly report. And Commissioner Moore, did you have activities this week?
Oh, absolutely. I will be in Long Beach a week at Association of Washington Cities Conference.
And I also will be attending that conference, and Commissioner Olson is already over there. He's on a special committee that he had to start a couple of days early. So this is a once-a-year event, and it is extremely beneficial to the city of Shelton that your leaders go to this event. We've got extremely many creative ideas that come back from networking with other cities, and it's a valuable tool for us to help in the running of this city. So that completes our weekly commission reports. We do have an opportunity for the general public to speak a couple of times during our meetings. This is the first opportunity. If anyone has something on their mind, they would have to sign it on a sheet with their name and address, and there will be a time a little later also. So no one at this time? So there is no old business today. A couple of items on a new business, and the first will be a nest, a WestNet, Department of Commerce Justice Assistant Grant, Assistant's Grant, and our police chief Darren Moody is going to be talking with him about that.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. The city of Shelton receives grant funding as a subrecipient of the WestNet grants, and the funding for detective assignment of WestNet. The memorandum of understanding is effective through June of 2015, and the memorandum is effective July of 2015. They were approved by the commission, signed by the mayor. Staff requesting commission approval and authorized for the mayor and city administrator to sign the Washington State Department of Commerce Justice Assistant Grant Subrecipient Compliance Verification on June 29th on the consent agenda.
Any extreme questions for Chief Moody about this? Sounds good. Thank you for your work there, and we will place this on the consent agenda for June 29th, 2015, authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to sign. Next is going to be a report here or something, a briefing given to us by Mr. Steve Goines, our Community Economic Development Director, and it's involving temporary homeless encampments.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. The background on this is pre-brief. This was an item that was identified during our land use audit in 2014 with our insurance carrier to address a process to establish regulations for tent encampments in the city. We commenced that process in 2014. You may recall that in August, we briefed on a draft ordinance. At that time, we were establishing the Human Services Committee, and there was an interest expressed at that time to have the committee review those draft regulations and come back with some recommendations. This is, after a brief pause here, a review of those regulations, and there's been some brief wholesale changes, so I wanted to take a little time and kind of walk you through those changes. They're pretty significant. The original draft was really geared after what a number of other larger cities have been doing to try to address a process to allow these tent encampments, but anticipating they were large, and they would have a lot of management issues and complexities to them, to have a process to address all those different elements. When this was reviewed by the Human Services Committee, one of the items that really jumped out was, it's not likely that Shelton is going to add a tent encampment of 100 more people like Bellevue or some of the larger cities have, will probably at a smaller scale, and our need is going to be at a smaller scale. Can we have something that addresses that and in turn is regulated in a manner that addresses what we anticipate to be the impacts, which would be much less for a smaller facility than a larger facility? So the draft that you have before you sort of incorporated those basic components, and then I'll go into the deal how that was done. Another element that was identified pretty early by the committee was if something like the draft regulations that were being presented was actually introduced and passed, it would require that the temporary encampment move every 90 days to a different facility. And those different facilities would have to have all the physical components and all the management pieces that the other ones would have to have. So that the concept was that this would minimize the impact and enable it if you're moving this every 90 days. But in practicality, that plays a real role on, well, there's probably a very limited number of churches that will even have the grounds or the ability to accommodate this. It would likely mean that at some time during the year, those facilities wouldn't be operational at all. So we wanted to also address how that could be accommodated within Shelton and what our resources were allowed. So in the end, what was decided upon was to offer a process where a approval was sort of tiered based on the number of occupants, the type of occupants, and where it was located. In addition, there was a lot of interest to establish regulations that allowed someone to accommodate family members on their property in a similar manner, but at a very smaller scale. So the first tier that's in the new regulations addresses that provision that would allow a property owner to accommodate family members on site in a similar type of fashion, and it describes in about six or eight different regulations how that is focused, your in the rear yard, your screen, there's access to bathrooms, and all those basic safety and sanitary conditions are addressed. A second tier would allow a somewhat larger accommodation, but it wouldn't necessarily be family members to occur with a very limited amount of oversight. And that was, I think, to six individuals or two families. And so that was the medium tier that was described in the draft regulations. The third tier, the larger tier, is very similar to the type of encampment that was originally proposed, but it would be, again, a smaller scale. What is being proposed here is an encampment up to 30 individuals. It includes many of the same provisions that the original regulations required, but changed some of those out, and a fair amount of the staff report addressed those basic changes. I'll go over those if I can in just a moment here. One of the requirements was that a log needed to be kept of all the individuals that were on the grounds at all times, and that became true. That seemed a little onerous, and the fact that you had to maintain those records for six months after you closed your encampment to make those records accessible. That was removed from these new provisions. Another provision was that didn't get addressed really is the...
Excuse me, just a second. So I'm following tracking, and I'm going through everything with you. Can I ask this a question?
You bet.
So you said now the requirement, a log of the names of the individuals, was erroneous or something. So this is still something that they're going to do? They're going to have a list of people that are in the camp? Is that...
They're going to ask for names and verify you have proper identification. They want to know who you are. But if you decide to leave on Tuesday, they may or may not know that, and their record may not reflect that. They'll eventually figure that out perhaps, but they don't need to have a close, accurate record all the time.
Oh, not to check in every night?
Right.
Okay, that's the part that...
The separate part of this that I think you may be reading into that is the purpose of the identification was to do a warrants check, and there was some discussion over whether that was something that should be retained or not. If the police are contacted, they can do that verification. Other tent encampment facilities have that provision within their requirements, and what we were related is typically if you tell a prospective tenant, "We're going to check you for warrants," they don't bother checking in. They know there's trouble brewing, and they just go away. Usually, it doesn't come down to coming down and have to arrest somebody. They move on. But having the ability to figure out maybe someone has a very serious offense of where they are could be very valuable to the police department. We thought that was something that should be retained.
Again, one quick question then. So what is written here? Is this the final, or this is the process of where they are? Because I don't, is this it, or is this the final draft?
Well, this draft is a draft. Our ask today is to set up a public hearing to have further discussion of this.
Okay, so the final one will probably come out of some public, and possibly some other input. There may be some changes to...
I anticipate there will be further changes. The Human Services Committee has some questions about this draft. Some of the provisions here that really weren't addressed, we went over it, and I'm anticipating there'll be further refinements as we go.
Okay, thank you for your information.
One of the provisions excluded dogs from being allowed in these encampments, except for service dogs. There was some thought put into whether that was pertinent, particularly if you were trying to address a family that was maybe out of their house for whatever reason, and if they had some pets, those could be included. We included that in the draft that you're looking at here. There was a requirement for a public hearing before the hearing examiner. The hearing examiner would have determined and imposed conditions on the tent encampment. We removed that provision from the requirements. There was a separate informal public hearing that was required to let the neighbors and interested parties know that this is, something is being considered, and that was retained so that the neighbors have this back and forth with the city so they can be aware of what's being proposed, perhaps offer something in terms of insightful conditions or something that could be placed into the permit. The provisions, again, as I stated, limited the location to 90 days. The Human Services Committee, when this draft was reviewed, didn't really address the question of how long is the proper amount of time. There is some concern at the staff level that just allowing it forever might not be exactly what is going to be acceptable out of the community. So we landed on a six-month duration for that. Again, that's going to be, I'm sure, debated further as this goes through the process. One of the elements that was in the draft that was reviewed last year was how to deal with children. In this case, we didn't want to include a haven for minors that are on the run, but minors that are with their parents or guardian, we want to include them, so that's how we want to do this currently. There was a condition to return the facilities to their condition that they were in prior to when the permit was issued, within a week of closure. That seemed a little onerous as well to mainly the committee members. Staff agreed, giving some of a week to return the property to those conditions. Steeped a little unreasonable, and by and large, we felt that the churches in particular that might want to host this are probably good neighbors to begin with and want to do the right thing, but not necessarily make that something that happens. That was a little useless. There was also a provision to require a parking plan and a transportation plan. That didn't seem to be something that we, based on the size of the facilities we had, would be necessary. There is a, there wasn't a lot of discussion over whether it should be near public transportation. That seemed to be a sensible link. We didn't require that, but that might be something, again, that we'll be talking about Our request is to set up a public hearing for July 6th. We'll be trying to get the word out that this is coming, get the word out in terms of drafts, and just allow people to tune and review this and provide comment. And as I stated, I anticipate the Human Services Committee will want to make some refinements as this goes through the process. But I think the larger components that we were trying to capture when we did the initial review, the three-tiering, the smaller-scale, accommodating family members, those are all , I think, pretty important pieces in this routine.
I have a question. Could you explain a little more the second tier? Is that on private property? Is that on church property?
That is, as proposed in here, on private property. There was some discussion at the committee level on whether that could be something that we accommodate on church properties or any properties.
And that's up to 30 people?
That is the largest tier. Where it is in the draft regulations is it's 2047-030 Part B. Part B is the second tier. And that was, again, hosted by a religious organization, not on any property they would say.
Hosted, but not on, it could be on private property. It's hosted by a church, but doesn't have to be church property for second, the second tier.
It would be, it could be hosted by anyone, but the idea was to have that place on property of a religious organization.
Okay, property of the center.
Right.
Okay, so does that mean that it's on the property that the church is also located on, or is it...
The church's property. The host could be a nonprofit organization. The host and where the facility is located doesn't have to be the same entity. And that's typical for these encampments. There is an organization that's managed, and it hosts any of these on the whole.
Okay, and then I am a little concerned that we're not allowing the youth in any of these encampments, because we know there are a lot of homeless youth that don't have families. Are we looking at making any types of these camps youth only?
That's something that we could consider. There was a lot of discussion over that component of this. There's some safety elements to that, having youth at a facility like this that gave us a lot of concern. And how young are you allowed to be, to be there? Are you allowing 11-year-olds to be there? Is that something you really want to support as a city? Yeah, so that's the reason we...
Okay, and then has, did the Police Department weigh in on this at all?
No, this still is under review.
So they will have an opportunity to comment and give input?
We can talk more, I can bounce into some ideas along with your line, and if you, we can just discuss this as I have. So I just, well, the police was, I thought it was important that the police did weigh in on this, because they, they're set of rules. But the first thing I wanted was to thank the committee for the hard work that they did in putting this together. This is not easy, and the biggest thing that I think you addressed right out there, our city doesn't meet all of the Seattle and Tacoma Olympia standards on how you do something like that. So, and it's not easy, what you're doing. And I think this conversation is very good, along with the public hearing, because whenever you start something new like this in a state that's never ever had this before, there will be all sides coming out, and we have to make a decision for everyone how this is going to work. And so I was, I'm glad about the police element. I also am concerned about the kids, the 13, 14, 15-year-old kids. It's sad that our society doesn't have grandparents or churches or something that can, if the parents can't pick up that loop that you've got 10 or 12 or 13 or 14-year-olds that have no place to go, and they're just hanging out. This kind of thing, you know, really, there's something that needs to be for them, whether it's a homeless shelter or something, but making them go, like if folks make them try to stay at home. So I don't know how that fits into the legal ramifications and stuff, so that, that is an area of this kind of a situation that I kind of feel I'd have something, whether it's a sponsor home or whatever. I mean, I could have a creative idea, and I had one, that in these churches that were going to sponsor this, they could have their whole list of things for their congregation to think about, and that would be, there are some 13, 14, 12, 10-year-old kids that can't stay at home anymore and won't go into this, you know, is there a member in the church that would be open to sponsor and bring that child into their home like a stepparent or big brother, you know? That would probably, because then it's a lot more hands-on, it's mentoring, it's, you know, it's not them just living in a tent, it's them actually living in somebody's home because they have no home to live in. So that would be an idea that might help in filling in that. If the church was going to have this, then one of the little side chapters could be, is there anybody here that might be open to sponsor a child that doesn't fit into this? And I think you would have some response. So that would be possibly a way to fill in for those children. The other question I had is on item number eight, the number one, and that's where, let's just say Gary in his backyard wants to put two tents up and have two families living there, right? This is my choice there. Well, Gary probably could do okay, but what I'm afraid of is what if you have a family that's probably not following all of the highest standards of legal, ethical responsibilities, and they have two other families that might not want to follow those, and kind of having a camp in their backyard where there is a lot of, you know, I mean, responsible people trying to help people transition out of this tent is one thing, but what kind of oversight would there be to somebody that says, "Great," and they just renters, you know? They just move in, two more renters in their backyard, and they go under this, you know, this is not a desire not to help people, this is a desire to help all of us and do the right thing. So the first one, having people camped out in anybody's backyard, that one I probably would say, I think it needs some real rules to it. So that's just kind of my ramblings on a lot of that stuff, and Commissioner Olson isn't here, but I'm sure he has thoughts on this too.
Yeah, I guess I have less concerns with that because it says that it has to be family members, and it's limited to five. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And is there a time limit on that?
There wasn't one placed on that. The staff's thought was that could be accommodated in a similar manner to how we currently regulate home occupational businesses, where you come in and you tell us what your intentions are if you're running a accounting business out of your home. Are you going to have employees coming, are you going to have clients coming in all day, or is it going to be less impactful to your neighborhood than that? And usually, we have a checklist of things you manage, and based upon how well that fits in with our codes, we allow or don't allow those home occupations. This is something that we would have to add to our plan if things were regulated and maintained, but there was also a strong desire in the committee to try to incorporate some way of, as you should describe, helping family members who may be... And this is, I didn't try to address that.
I guess I don't have as many concerns with that one. My number one concern with all of this is to provide housing for those who need it, but also to protect the investment of the neighborhoods. You know, many people, this is their biggest investment, and there isn't a lot of money in our city to, and I would hate for the neighborhoods to become degraded because of these type of uses. So I think we do have to really be mindful of that, and I appreciate, appreciate the efforts that are made in here, in this document. So, and obviously, we do have some more work to do, more discussion. I understand that the SPAC committee has some changes, maybe they would like issue of stats, so...
There was another emerging issue of sorts when this draft was crafted. Sort of a follow-up, there was some discussion over the types of structures that someone could be allowed, whether it's a tent or some other newer sort of leaning edge.
Camp or a trailer in the backyard?
Well, yeah, in other cities now, folks are making temporary structures out of pallets. I mean, lots of different things are happening up there, and we could probably... I mean, lots of different things are happening up there, and we could probably do well by focusing on what maybe were permitting or permitting, the types, the numbers. And I anticipate that leading the refinancing of this is going to work.
On the issue of pets, I know that pets are part of the family, and knowing the family does the pet must go a lot of times just for family health. Do we have any regulations on the pets? Like, I'm just thinking that in a confined area or in close quarters like that, if you have a number of dogs, it would be important to make sure that each of those dogs are immunized? Immunosized? Immunized?
Yeah.
So I don't know if that is too cumbersome, but it seems that it is an important point to me to make sure that we're not having diseased animals spreading the disease.
To follow up on that point, my concern was the possibility of somebody that had a dog that had had some previous encounters, like dangerous encounters with people, they were now in a more confined space, you know, they're bringing their family pet who just got out of jail because it bit something, you know? I mean, those kinds of things, you know? And again, that's just a thought. And back to the number one, here as far as value of someone's property is if you have a decent home and you're living somewhere in the city, and all of a sudden, your neighbor next door chooses to have two tents with their families living in the backyard next door to your house, and you want to sell your house, it will pack the sale price of your house, just like a vacant boarded up house that's being broken into with the abandoned houses, just like in talking to different people, especially about those, this opens up kind of a whole other can of worms. In a good situation where a family's trying to help somebody and staying in their backyard and, you know, there's, in a good neighborhood and all these things, but sometimes you have a, you allow for something, and then it stretches that envelope to where you could have some situations that aren't exactly as beneficial for everyone as it would seem. So these are all just thoughts and concerns I've kind of had, and I've only had this, you know, a few days, just kind of rambling over a little bit. But I think it's something that we have to do. I think in all of our discussions, I think we will come up with something, and then it's possibly a learning process over a year from now or two years from now, when certain situations get set up, we can say, "Uh-oh, we didn't understand that element of it." But I guess in this town, because of possibly the locations of the prison and the economic condition, having two tents in anybody's backyard, you know, to house family members, I'm just, I'm just wondering if that's going to work very well, you know? And again, it's whatever the people want. You're going to have a public hearing. We have the committee, maybe they'll go back and draft some, like, if anything, I would think you'd have to be some oversight on that activity because if bad people decided, it would just be real destructive to the neighbors, I think, if they just had a, you know, party in the backyard of there. Okay, any other comments or questions?
No.
All right. Thank you very much for your time on this, and again, the committee's work, and I think that we can follow your proposal to set a public hearing for July 6th, 2015, to accept written and oral testimony on the proposed regulation.
Thank you.
All right? Okay, and it's Mr. David Leary.
Thanks. I'll be traveling to an act with the commission for the WBC conference this week, again, starting tomorrow after lunch. And I'm also working on a performance measurement system, making sure that when we got everything submitted and we're able to get it back, that we're able to do data analysis. You know, that's, that's...
Okay, and anybody from the general public want to sign in and speak for a three-minute And just state your name for the record, please.
Marilyn Velver, 420 East Poplar. I appreciate your thoughtful consideration of the tent encampment ordinance. I would respectfully ask that you put the final approval date, the second reading, in As the mayor noted, you all have only had it a few days. The police have not yet reviewed it. The Human Services Committee has not reached final agreement on a version to send forward, and given our meeting schedule, SPAC does not meet between the public hearing date and the date of the second reading on the calendar. I really think, and I spoke with Toby Kevin, he's our chair, he apologizes for not being here, he has a medical appointment, but it's really the sense of at least the two of us in communication, this kind of part of the email, that we need at least two more good sessions to look at this, and certainly a chance to look at a version drafted after public hearing. And so I would make that request ostensibly on behalf of the committee, even though it's only me and Toby. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your work on this committee and your comments. So...
So I just have a question. So Marilyn, are you seeing like two months? Or is that, do you meet monthly?
We meet every two weeks, not like second and fourth or first and thirds. We meet every two weeks. But I checked the calendar, and I think we would meet two days after the second, I'm not sure, I may be wrong in that, but as I understood it, we only have two more meetings before that final approval date. So we meet the 24th. I guess we'd meet once after the public hearing. We'd meet the 24th and then the whatever two weeks is after that, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
I believe it would be the eighth.
The eighth, and then it would be up for approval. And the way we talk about things, I don't know, we've spent how many meetings on porta potties, and we finally reached the point that we have a request to go ahead that's waiting for you? But Toby and I thought we needed some significant time to work through a final version before we came up for a second meeting.
From staff perspective, I think if there's a belief that the draft that comes out of the public hearing needs more work, there's certainly no reason to rush into a meeting in two weeks and try to come up with a final deliverable. If that wants to get pushed out a month or six weeks, that's fine.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, administration final touches?
Yes. I'll have two next week and a couple of recommendations in the parish advisory committee concerning ordinance establishing committee and eligibility of those members, individual members, and potential naming process for public parks and potentially the shelter free trial.
All right. Our next meeting will be Monday, June 29th at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. This meeting is adjourned.